I'd like to call this meeting to order. Thank you all for being here. I'm Eric Anderson, Transportation Director for the Maricopa Association of Governments. I'll also be chairing this public hearing today. I want to thank you for taking the time to attend this hearing. Those driving to the meeting will validate your parking if you parked in the garage downstairs. And those using transit, we have transit tickets available too, so just contact one of the MAG staff and they'll accommodate you. This public hearing is just one of many opportunities throughout the planning and programming cycle to provide comments to MAG on our plans and programs. This is our opportunity to listen. We're interested in hearing what you have to say regarding the Valley's transportation system. Those who wish to comment will have three minutes to express their concerns on any issues related to transportation in the Valley. Any comments received here today will be recorded verbatim by the court reporter and staff will provide written responses to comments. The comments and responses will be included in the fiscal year 2016 MAG mid-phase input opportunity report. This report will be distributed to all the MAG policy committees and ADOT for review prior to taking action, final action on our plans and programs. Next, I'd like the other members of the panel to introduce themselves. Let's go from left to right.
My name is Amy Seager and I work at the Maricopa Association of Governments.
I'm Roger Herzog, Maricopa Association of Governments.
Robert Forrest with Valley Metro.
Kui Ken, ADOT Multimodal Planning Division.
And hopefully Mr. Ken Kessler from City Phoenix Transit will join us in a bit. Thank you. I'd like to quickly go over the agenda for today. First, we'll have some brief presentations to be given by MAG staff and an operational update from Valley Metro. Following these presentations, we'll take public comment on the information presented today, after which we will adjourn. For those of you who are wanting to make comments on the material presented today, a speaker's request form is available from MAG staff at the registration table over there by the back door. Please complete this form so we are able to give everyone an opportunity to speak. As you come up to the podium, please state the following information for the formal record: your name and the city in which you live. So, we're going to go on to the presentations now. The first one is on the MAG Transportation Improvement Program. It's Terry Kennedy.
Thank you and good morning. My name's Terry Kennedy. I am the Transportation Improvement Program Manager here at MAG. And a little bit about MAG: we are made up of regional towns, cities, counties, and tribal members in Maricopa County and portions of Pinell County. And this is just an overview of our planning region. We specialize in regional aspects of regional transportation and air quality and other items. So, a little bit before we get started about what's in the tip, I'm going to include what's not in the tip. And what's not in the tip are things like planning projects and especially local roadway projects. Again, we concentrate on areas of regional significance for projects. And what is included in the plan are a five-year program, so it's all the listing of capital improvement projects that you'll see for transportation over a five-year period. And it does include all regionally significant projects. And development and implementation of the plan is including FHWA, which is Federal Highway Administration, Federal Transit Administration, Arizona Department of Transportation, our member agencies, and also members of the public that develop transportation projects that are regionally significant. It also includes elements that demonstrate a financial plan on how we can implement those projects in the Transportation Improvement Program. The tip that we're developing right now is developed, building upon the regional transportation plan that's in place, the tip that's in place, and many of the plans and policies and programs that are developed regionally and locally. And this is very important because the information that we collect and include in the tip is also supplied to us from our member agencies and those of the public. So, a bit about the data: it's really provided to us by members of the public and our local agencies who developed those projects to be included in the plan. So, in our listings, again, I said regionally significant projects, and those are federally-funded or locally-funded projects. In the Maricopa County area of the MAG planning boundary, we do have a half-cent sales tax that also helps us fund these projects, and it's allocated to transit, freeways, and our arterial roadway projects. Included in the Transportation Improvement Plan are our three lifecycle programs, and they come up with a blended funding of federal funds and that half-cent sales tax and local funds. And each one of these programs is a 20-year program and concludes in 2026. Also included in the Transportation Improvement Program is the Federal Transit Administration 5307 program. And what that is, is our general public transit capital improvement program. And that currently is being reviewed at our Transit Committee, and that's coming up on May 17th. So, many of the projects will be recommended at that committee and move forward. And at the conclusion of developing the program of projects, it will be applied through a grant administration process for 2016, and 2017 will also be included in the tip listings for review. How the program of projects is developed is 25% of the funds are immediately taken off the allocation to help fund preventative maintenance aspects of the capital program for transit. We also fund job access and reverse commute eligible activities out of the program. And we fund the transit lifecycle capital projects. So, this would be the bus expansion and bus replacement projects. And then with the funding that's left over, there is a competitive application process to fund those aspects of the transit system for unmet needs. Also included in the Transportation Improvement Program are the modal types of specific projects, such as bicycle and pedestrian projects, intelligent transportation system projects, and our air quality program that includes paving of unpaved dirt roads, PM10 certified street sweepers, and regional ride share and other elements. Quantity of programs: we currently have just over 600 individual projects and work phases, and when programming completes for the full tip, we expect to approach 1,500 to 2,000 work phases and projects to be included in the tip. For a little bit more about the tip listing data, you'll see one to five work phases typically programmed for each project. And more detail is included in the tip listings that gives you an idea of when the project will be underway, the type of funding on the project, and if it belongs to an arterial lifecycle, regional freeway lifecycle, or transit lifecycle program. Total funding right now for the tip is $5.3 billion in our draft tip, and this gives you an idea of the percentage of funding by program. Overview of the transit and bus program by source. And we have a large federal funding allocation for both bus and rail. Regional funds much of the program with local support on our capital transit program. Highway funding gives you an idea of the percentages by regional, local, and federal funds. And highway projects are categorized on the right-hand side. They include freeway interchanges, ITS, safety projects, street intersection projects, air quality projects, bike ped projects, bridge projects, and then some of the other projects that help support those systems, and they're categorized as other. We also allocate a percentage of the highway funds over to transit, and that goes into the rail program. So, some of the next steps for the development of the tip is we will send the listing of projects to undergo air quality conformity. We'll finish up our transit programming in some of the other program areas that are still underway. We'll have a full published listing of all the tip listing projects. And we'll have a final phase public meeting on June 7th, and the committees will review and recommend for approval the draft 2017 to 21 tip. And at the conclusion of that, it is submitted to Federal Highways, Federal Transit Administration, Arizona Department of Transportation for their final review. And if you'd like a little bit more information, we do have website information on the development of the tip and everything else you'll see here today. Thank you again for attending.
Thank you, Terry. Next presentation, Mark Purisal, who's a planner here at MAG, going to present the amendment to the 2035 Regional Transportation Plan.
Thank you, Chair, and members of the public. As Eric mentioned, these are regarding changes to the regionally significant projects within the draft 2017 to 2021 tip and an amendment to the FY 2014 to 2018 MAG tip and 2035 Regional Transportation Plan. As per the presentation, this is specifically focusing on the revised opening dates for rail transit projects within that draft tip and the 2035 Regional Transportation Plan. Specifically, there are four rail transit corridors, light rail transit corridors, that our friends at Valley Metro and City of Phoenix have been working on for quite some time, and an addition of a new light rail station at 50th Street. As you can see on the map here, most of them include advancements or accelerations in opening dates. I'll go from top to left to bottom to the right, counterclockwise. You'll see the Northwest Extension going from 2026 to 2023. The Capital I-10 West project has been split into two phases. The original opening date for Phase 1 stands from downtown Phoenix to the State Capitol with 19th Avenue, State Capitol to 79th Avenue, and I-10 deferred to 2030. The South Mountain Corridor Light Rail line will be advanced to 2023 from its original date of 2034. The Tempe Streetcar project will have a deferment of one year till 2019, and then the 50th Street Light Rail Station will open in 2019. This just gives you a little bit further information on each corridor. These corridor project changes come from the City of Phoenix's successful Proposition 104 from August of 2015. I apologize, I should have had this on for our friends in the audience. Okay. Northwest Light Rail Extension Phase 2. This advancement was a result of the January 26, 2016, Phoenix City Council vote to advance that acceleration to 2023 from 2026. As you may have all heard, the Northwest Extension 1 project opened earlier this month to Great Fanfare at 19th Avenue and Dunlap. And this would come on the heels of that. This 1.7-mile extension would go further to the northwest, span Interstate 17, and tie-in with Metro Center Mall. The South Central Line, again, it's a five-mile corridor that's been under study for some time now. Due to that same city council vote, the line will be accelerated from 2034. Excuse me, the graph on the lower left is actually wrong. The dates are wrong. That is my mistake. It's being accelerated from 2034 to 2023, an 11-year advancement. Your handout sheet also shows the correct dates. Capital I-10 West Light Rail Extension. This project is being split into two phases. Phase 1, as I mentioned before, stands with a 2023 opening date from downtown to the State Capitol campus. And then from 19th Avenue to the 75th Avenue and I-10 park-and-ride, that will be deferred. That 9.5-mile section will be deferred till 2030. Tempe Streetcar. This project is being deferred by one year specifically to more closely align with the Federal Transit Administration's funding allocation schedule, as well as project delivery and vehicle procurement. So, look for an opening of that project, that three-mile project, in 2019. And the last one is the 50th Street Light Rail Station at Washington and 50th Street. This is an important station because this actually helps serve the East Phoenix neighborhood, specifically the Ability 360 facility, the businesses and restaurants that have really kind of blossomed there, east of the 202, the post office. And again, it provides access to an area that previously did not have a light rail station. So, that concludes my presentation, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Our final presentation today is an overview of the operational aspects of the tip from Valley Metro's perspective on the bus side. Jorge Luna is here from Valley Metro to do this presentation. Jorge?
Good morning, everyone. My name is Jorge Luna, and I'll be giving you an overview of the program, bus and fixed route and alternative mode programs that Valley Metro has to offer. And Mark covered the light rail component, and I'll be covering the other aspects of our program. Yes? Does that? Perfect, thank you. So, with that, we'll go with overall, the overview of the presentation is we'll talk about partnerships, highlight our work on the short-range transit program, upcoming service changes, recently completed origin and destination survey, and some travel demand management or Vampool programs that also Valley Metro has to offer. And then an overview of the ADA dollar ride service improvement that's scheduled for July of this year. So, with that, overall, these are the different partners that work with Valley Metro. We cannot implement service without the partnership and support of our member agencies. We cover a vast amount of area from the Northwest Valley to the Southwest Valley, from the Northeast to the Southeast Valley. And that area is covered by transit service. So, we have fixed route service, express, commuter service. We have also neighborhood circulators, crisscrossing the different parts of the valley to provide service. And that area or that network is supported by bus stops, transit centers, transit facilities, park-and-rides, maintenance facilities to support the overall network for the entire system. Beyond that, of course, Valley Metro also does travel demand management, which is Vampool, Share the Ride, Bike to Work, and Telecommute programs as well. And at the bottom, you see some of the different snapshots, pictures of different facilities that are out there, different modes, different services that are provided in the region. We have examples of transit centers or park-and-rides, light rail, the mobility center, maintenance facilities. So, that's what we use to support the network out in the region. So, with that, highlighting the short-range transit program, this is an effort that we've -- this is the second update for the -- this is the year of the second update that we've had so far. We've been working to identify regionally and locally funded service enhancements for the next five years in partnership with our member agencies. And this effort builds on current, previous, and ongoing Valley Metro efforts. It's in accordance with Transit Lifecycle Program adopted policies, and it's based on input from member agencies, Valley Metro staff, and the intent is to update the plan every two years, but we've been doing it at least right now every year. So, what are the concepts or what are the proposed concepts in the short-range transit program? They cover different items such as cost allocation, route extension, service enhancement, span of service improvements, route modifications, new service, and optimization of the network. So, that's just an overview of the work that we've been doing with our member agencies for the next five years. Now, that, of course, we have that sort of like a five-year outlook that we've been working on, but at the same time, we have biannual service changes, and these occur on April and October of each year. We continue working on expanding and improving the system, looking for efficiencies and optimization and effectiveness. And at the same time, this is greatly done with regional coordination and public input to get services out where they are needed. This is just a map in the next slide that I'm presenting here, a map of the proposed October 2016 service changes. And some of the highlights right now, of course, we're going through the public input process, and please visit the Valley Metro website to provide comment on the proposed changes. But these are just some of the proposals out there where we've been working with Phoenix to expand service hours, improve frequency, adding trips to certain routes, modifying routes slightly to different catchment areas, consolidate routes to improve efficiency, and at times, scale back frequency to make sure that we're being effective in the resources that are being applied out in the region. Beyond the biannual service changes, of course, that was October, was proposed for October, but beyond that, we're continuing planning for the future in partnerships with, of course, the public and our member agencies, working to implement Proposition 400, the remaining years of Prop 400, working to also with local cities in their individual initiatives such as the Phoenix T-2050 Plan and Tempean Motion Plan, and of course, any locally funded improvements that they may come from the general fund from individual member cities. So, we continue to work and coordinate to provide an enhanced service. Also to highlight, we've recently completed an origin and destination survey. This was about 22,000 surveys that were completed. It's very rich information. We got a lot of feedback and information from the public as to who is riding the system, who comprises the system. And this information feeds not only our analysis purposes, but it also feeds the MAG regional travel demand model at the same time. So, this is something that we recently completed, and it was presented before our board earlier this year. Next on the list is talking a little bit about Vampool. Vampool is just a flexible service for commuters going to and from work. It's a van for six to 15 people. We have primary and volunteer, primary and alternate drivers. It is a form of public transportation, and the ride share and the costs, payers fund the rides for the lease and the fuel of the vehicle, and it's approximately about a $25 fee per person per week to participate in this commuter service program. Actively right now, we have 455 vans that range in different seating capacities. They have AC, they have remote control windows, tinted windows. They're full-size vans. We recently got new ones from, I think they're called Four Connect, and they're pretty neat, efficient, and they have bike racks if requested at the same time. So, this is a commuter service beyond the fixed route system that's out there. One very neat thing to highlight is the regional dollar ride. Beginning in July, Valley Metro will implement consistent policies and procedures and the elimination of transfers between the dollar ride service areas. And this recently got approved, and we're working hard for the implementation date of July of this year. So, that is a really neat effort in partnership and in coordination, of course, with the public and our member agencies for a SEMA service throughout the region in dollar ride. So, lastly, just to highlight some of the benefits of transit, all modes of transit and transportation, of course, the economic development creates jobs, provides job access, it provides economic competitive for the region, it provides environmental benefits, it reduces congestion, energy conservation, cleaner air, and at the same time, provides social benefits, mobility independence, and quality of life. So, with that, this concludes my presentation and the overview of the bus program so far, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jorge. Really appreciate that presentation. As Wendy Miller walks out the door, she was -- I failed to introduce her as the representative of City Phoenix Transit. Now, we have Ken Kessler here. So, Ken, thank you for joining us.
Sure.
So, we're going to move into the public comment portion of the hearing now. So, as everyone has time to speak, we're requesting that you limit your comments to three minutes. Timer is on the podium to assist you in making your presentation. When two minutes have gone by, the yellow light will come on to notify the speaker that they have one minute remaining to sum up their comment. At the end of the three-minute time period, the red light will come on, followed by a beeping sound. So, let's begin with our first member of the public. I have three speaker cards. The first one I have is Howard May. Howard?
Some of you know me, some of you do not. This is my first time at this particular meeting. People from Phoenix and Valley Metro see me all the time. I'm happy about the things coming from Phoenix, including the 50th Street Station for light rail. However, there were things promised to us when the tax was voted in in Prop 400. The I-10 West capital alignment, you're going to have a lot of people giving you static about it because it got delayed. And there should be, until that's built, should be some sort of short-term solution like a bidirectional rapid or kind of like a link bus to subsidize that part of the city. If you live in Phoenix, you get 15-minute service, and you can take buses up until 10, 11 o'clock. You live in Glendale or some of the other cities and don't catch your second bus by 9 o'clock, you get stranded. There are parts of this town where there were routes in Avondale and in Surprise and Northwest Valley that were taken away due to recession. However, there are parts in this town that do need bus service, and it's not being properly accommodated. Some of the things, I know one of the council members from Phoenix, he lost a bus route. It was a regular bus route. It used to be the blue line, now it went to 39, now it's nothing. And he has to wait for his portion of the light rail for Northeast Valley. But there are parts where the routes need to be improved. Litchfield Roads and Camelback Roads were part of RTP back in the day, and they've been on hold forever. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. May. Appreciate those comments. The next speaker card I have is Councilman Roland Winters.
Thanks very much for the opportunity to speak before you folks. My name is Roland Winters, Jr. I'm a councilman for the city of Surprise, and I was disappointed when I didn't have the map of MAG. And look at the Valley Metro, if you look real close to the upper-left corner in the edge, we just barely made on the map. Map's not there now. But anyway, we have a real problem in Surprise, and I'm very frustrated. Even before I got on the council, we have a population of 130,000-plus, and all we really have is dollar ride. Not that I'm happy with dollar ride. I think dollar ride is good, and I'm glad we have it, but it's not enough. And I like to see a bus through our city that has fixed bus route stops at a fixed time. Every fiscal year, I go to my colleagues in the council, and you know what I'm there for. I'm there for more money for dollar ride. And they're getting sick and tired of seeing me coming to talk to them. However, this year, I was able to get 20 more rides, and that helps. My constituents call me when they can't get a ride. And I'm not just talking about people that are disabled, elderly, I'm talking about our general population. I'm in District 1, which is the largest district in Surprise, and for that 15-year-old kid, a bike ride to the Digiplex Theater, which is on the other side of the city, is a long bike ride for him. And it's not fair to our residents not to have some kind of transportation. I was in Orange County, California, for 35 years before I came to Arizona, and I was always correct about a bus only coming once every half hour. If I had that once every half hour now, I'd be in happy heaven somewhere. But we don't, and we have to work with what we got. Us folks in Surprise are wondering where our share of the 400 proposition money went. I believe in 2009, you guys reallocated the money, MAG reallocated the money, so we don't have anything. Unfortunately, sometimes when people talk about transportation, they're talking about bridges and roads, not transit. And I think transit is just as important as roads and bridges. And so, I hope before I meet my maker, we have some kind of And so I hope, before I meet my maker, we're having some kind of transportation in Surprise. Like I said, our dollar ride system is good. I'm really happy with Valley Metro. They do a good service there, providing it with our discount cab company. But like I said, sometimes you have to call 14 days in advance to get a ride. It's gotten a little better now since we're able to get a few more rides on our transit system. But anyway, I'm very hopeful that we'll be able to see some kind of bus system in Surprise. I know we're, like people say, you're way out there. Someday, we'll not be way out there. We'll be a lot closer. But hopefully, we hope to get some transportation out there soon. Thanks very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. The next speaker card I have is Sharon Heftick?
Good morning. I'm representing the Northwest Valley Connect. My name is Sharon Haddock, and I live in Sun City West. And I'm going to kind of go on the same information that Roland also presented. We have approximately 187,000 people that live in Sun City, Sun City West, and Surprise with absolutely no services whatsoever. We have a mobility manager, federal mobility manager now that is with Northwest Valley Connect. We support, and the Northwest Valley Connect is connecting seniors with disabilities with existing transportation services, and identifies and resolves the gaps in services where they exist in our communities. So I brought you one of our flyers, and in the back, it shows the number of calls we get to the call centers. We've developed our own call center. This is a 501(c)(3) that we actually are now supporting. This particular graph will show you that over 90% of the trips are either medical or shopping. We have them all the way from Mesa actually calling to the call center in Sun City West because there are that many people that don't know how to find services. We have, my daughter lives in New Jersey, and mom can't drive, so how do I get her to the doctor? Calls, those kinds of things. We actually work with the Sun Health Foundation. So in dealing with these issues for us, it's very important for you to realize that I watch the bus stop at 83rd and 101 and make loops and go back. I watch the bus stop at Banner Boswell, make a loop, and go back. It's six miles to the Delwell Hospital. It's six miles from either direction, from either one of Banner Boswell or from the Arrowhead Shopping Mall. It doesn't take anything to complete the route. And once we got that route in of any kind, where we had it coming down either Bell or Grand, we would be able to completely continue to do these services inside Sun City West and Sun City, which now we're having to do both pieces. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments.
Can you give Mike a copy of this?
Yes, please. Thank you. Okay. That's the last card I have. Anybody else care to speak? Thank you all very much for coming and providing us your input. Thank you, ADOT, City of Phoenix, Valley Metro, for joining us here today and for your presentations. For those of you who provided input today, your comments will be included in the official record and made part of our decision-making process. So thank you again, and we hope to see you at the next meeting. Thank you.